Hello, my name is Josh Leekus. I'm the chairperson of the Building Board of Appeals and I will be presiding over the board deliberations this evening. The Board, Building Board of Appeals is an impartial body made up of residents of the town of Prescott Valley who volunteer their time and efforts and are guided by state and local rules and regulations. I would like to call the April 10th, 2019 Board of Appeals Working Meeting into order. Members of the town staff present are Woody Lewis, building official, Warren Colvin, senior building inspector, Kristi Jones, administrative support part D, and Richard Parker. Kristi, could you please call role?
Member Leadhead.
Here.
Member Smith.
Here.
Member Nye.
Here.
Member Pape.
Here.
Member Norton.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Jerpy.
Here.
And Chairperson Leekus.
Present.
Alrighty, now I'd like to ask Woody and Warren to give their presentation.
Thank you Chair and Board. As we recall from our last meeting, we were directed by the Board of Appeals to look at the comparisons to the energy code. So in your packet today, you will see a kind of a major component and other subsidiary components of what the energy codes would and require based from the 2006 to the 2009 and then again to the 2012. I can go over some of these changes, hit the highlights. In the 2006 code that we're currently under, the ceiling insulation R value is an R-38. Under the 2009, that would stay R-38, but under the 2012, it would jump up to an R-49 in the ceiling. Then you have skylights, factors of .6, .6, and then it would drop to a .55. Your window requirements would go from a .4 to a .35 and then to a .35. And then you see the wall installations would go from 13 to an R-20. When you look at these comparisons in regards to the code, you also get on your second page, you'll see some additional major requirements. Right now, you have caulking and sealing of your building envelope, which is generally your top plates, bottom plates. 2009, that same requirement would be in place, but you would add additional areas like corner studs, top plates, drywall being caulked to the studs. And then in 2012, it even gets more restrictive where you actually have the same requirements, but then your air losses, air changes would have to be verified by a blower door. When you add all these changes up to the code, roughly, you're looking at a cost for construction around $2,000 per house. When I pulled a report that came from Department of Justice, when you looked at the cost savings, energy cost savings from 2006 to 2009, on average, a homeowner over a 30-year period would save roughly $3,250 over a 30-year period. So that boils down to like $108 a year. So when you factor in the cost of construction over the lifetime of a house, it generally would take roughly 20 years to pay off the additional costs. On average now, homeowners are staying in a house between three to five years, so they'll never see that recouping of that cost. So it's the town's recommendation to the board that we stay with the current 2006 energy code as adopted and try not to increase these requirements. That's pretty much the bottom line of it. If you guys have any other questions for me in regards to energy code.
When, when you're figuring a cost, Warren, did you, R-49, you gotta do a standoff trust, so there's extra trust cost, which I'm sure aren't valued into this. They just said, how much a foot is R-49, how much a foot is R-38?
Yeah, the cost analysis was done by a company, so I'm pretty sure when they, I have the report from the Department of Energy, they factored all that in, but then they reduced it for the state of Arizona, so the whole thing that caught me off guard was is that you're looking at a savings of over a 30-year period that equals out to $100 a year. I mean, are we really, and the other thing that you have is, is most of our builders that we have in Prescott Valley right now, we only have one builder that's actually putting R-13 in a wall. They're, they're doing it without us telling it because they want to give their clientele that, that product that people are looking for. So why get government involved in something that the people are wanting to do already is our main factor.
I'm surprised at the low amount of money that you're saving though, I guess, it surprises me, I guess, but I'm from northeast Michigan, so it probably...
Yeah, there are, when you look at the different climates, I mean Arizona, right here, northern Arizona or central Arizona that we're in, we're a climate four. And you gotta also realize that these are all based on, our design here is based on heating, not cooling. So when you get into the more northern climates, the cost savings is dramatic. But for our climate right here, we feel that the 2006 energy code is satisfactory for our climate that we have right here.
But I thought you said that the other cities that we had are going with the 2012.
Right now, the only jurisdictions that you have or that are going to the 12 is the city of Prescott and the town of Chino Valley. And when you look at their amendments that they're doing to the code, they're actually not fully adopting the 2012. They did add provisions for the blower door instead of being tested by a third party. The reasoning, they don't really, they didn't really want to do it, but their deciding factor is, is they took money from the state and the state said that they have to have a progressive, they can't be more than eight, was it, or six years out of code cycle. So their hands were handcuffed on it because they took that money that was put out by the state. So when you actually talk to the people at the jurisdictions, they don't want to go to it, but they're handcuffed.
I had, can I make a couple of comments? I, of course, had raised this issue, we'd like to make a couple of comments related to the subject. I might emphasize that I have found it very enjoyable in the past working with you folks in the building department because you helped me build better houses. So my experience with you has been very good. And I know on this subject of energy conservation and adopting a, an updated code, and I'm in the minority on this, in this room, I understand that. I fully understand that if you change codes and go to newer codes, it's many headaches and there are numerous problems and negatives associated with that. For sure, if we were to update the energy codes, contractors certainly are going to argue that it costs too much or that it's a waste of time. There's difficulty associated with that, like there are all the other codes that have to be adopted too. For the building department, I sure don't want to cause more work for you folks. I think you do an excellent job and have always totally voted in favor of whatever you have recommended. I understand it takes a lot of time to review the codes and then decide on any amendments or deletions that you might choose to do. Buying manuals to accommodate new codes are expensive, staff training costs money. You get increased complaints from contractors and builders as they're having to deal with these issues. So I know it is not easy and I appreciate that from, from the standpoint of the building I get it. The question for me is, and I hope for others, is in considering negatives associated with going to a more current energy code, it's weighing negatives against positives. And for sure, in my mind, if the negatives outweigh the positives, well then, it's not a good idea to do that. The fact that there are negatives, like you described, although I have different numbers than you were stating as far as savings, but given what, what you had, what you had just thrown out, Mr. Colvin, I, there are negatives, there's no question. But how many negatives versus how many positives? With your permission, I've mentioned some negatives, I'd like to share some positives that go with updating our building code. Is that okay? One reason it seems to me appropriate, and I've spent a lot of time on this, I don't take it lightly when I recommend something that is going to cause cost and/or time for you folks. It seems to me that if I'm going to advocate for something, I need to have done my homework and have reasons for that. I'd like to share with you what I think are 13 good reasons to update our energy code. And even though I realize I'll likely be voted down on this, at least I want our board to be aware of what these are. One is conserving energy is part of Prescott Valley's 2025 general plan. Specifically on page 163 of the general plan, it speaks to energy conservation. The narrative says energy is an important subject for all Arizona residents due to regional increases in energy prices. Prescott Valley is no exception to that. Limited supplies and environmental concerns regarding conventional energy resources such as oil, electricity, natural gas require their conservation. Page 170, general plan, goal EPW-A7, promote resource and energy conservation within Prescott Valley. It seems to me that to update, upgrade, at least to what our neighboring communities are doing, every community, as far as I could find online, is at least to 2012. Flagstaff, Chino Valley, Prescott, and Phoenix. If I'm not right about that, you can correct me. It seems to me, in the best interest of Prescott Valley, to be able to say to our public, here is our 2025 plan, here's quite a bit said about energy and energy conservation and environmental protection, and here is what we're doing to attend to and respond to our 2025 plan. I don't understand putting in a plan, these kind of comments about preservation and conservation, and then not upgrading so that we can publicize that. Second, I am the only code that over time saves residents and businesses really significant amounts of money. Even at minimal figures, it adds up to a lot of money when you consider all of the structures that are built and the people that will be using those and paying the energy costs for them over time. The town's image. Failure to update handicaps local realtors and town reps who are courting new business when we're trailing our neighboring towns in at least what's in the record as our energy Environmentally, it goes without saying, the consuming less energy decreases the amount of damaging greenhouse pollutants entering our air and water. In our general plan, we clearly state, we want to preserve our clean environment, both in water and air. Fifth, newer codes have clarified sections of the IECC that had caused confusion, simplify the language and remove contradictions between different parts of the code. That's from Department of Energy. Training and software availability. Training classes and webinars are typically offered only for the latest energy codes. If you wait several years to move up, you'll miss the free ones and need to pay for custom training. Software too is only supported for the last, latest three energy codes. It avoids huge jumps. Each newer version of the code has some changes and some improvements. Over time, if you skip a few rounds, these changes add up considerably and it becomes a daunting challenge to play catch-up. Inconsistency for builders from one jurisdiction to the next. Most builders and trades work in multiple jurisdictions and they don't want to spend time changing building practices from one side of the street to the other with a patchwork of different codes and standards. Updating aligns us with our tri-city neighbors, which is something that has been talked about here that we want to do, is be in alignment and essentially level that, a local playing field. More flexibility for homeowners. The 2015 IECC added a new compliance path for residential, the energy rating index. This allows builders to meet the code by reaching a whole house target score. Newer materials, technologies, and techniques. Updating to the latest energy code ensures our residents and building owners are getting the innovations in efficiency and style seen in neighboring jurisdictions and states. It's pointed out by the DOE that building codes work together as a package. Upgrading all codes except the energy code leads to codes out of sync and inconsistencies between code elements. It results in sturdier, better-built homes. Houses and buildings built to newer codes are more efficient and can take advantage of newer materials and techniques. These homes and buildings are able to withstand severe temperature swings, storms, moisture, and mold issues better, and they are more durable and more comfortable for residents and tenants. And then of course, of course, it's the big cost savings, the savings from energy codes pay for themselves many times over. So there's some, it seems to me compelling reasons that are at an advantage to the city and the residents of the town to update our energy codes. But all I can do is make my case for that and I'm done with that. If anybody wants to ask me anything, I have the references of everything that I have said and would be glad to share that with you.
Richard, would you care to say a few words?
I always appreciate your preparedness and related to at least this issue and your service on the Building Board of Appeals. As you recall, we looked at this last time the building codes were adopted and elected to take a different direction and namely, it's because we live in a sea of Yavapai County. While, as Warren pointed out, city of Prescott and Chino Valley are obligated, because they actually took federal funds, that the town didn't take, we're not under the same kind of obligation. You're right, we do have references in our general plan and we've got strategies in the general plan to include embracing solar technologies where possible to save fiscal dollars for our wastewater treatment plant, pumping, which is a very large cost of delivery of utilities, and you're well aware that we're long into those processes. As Warren pointed out, there has been a major effort to make sure that wherever possible, we're consistent with other jurisdictions. Because of the limitation placed by the feds on Chino and Prescott, city of Prescott, they don't have that same flexibility. Yavapai County, on the other hand, doesn't have that obligation, so they've elected to stick with the 2006 and we prefer to stay with that code. In looking at some of the literature that staff provided to me, there's a couple of very apparent circumstances that cause us to recommend to you that we don't adopt the new codes. The energy codes, no matter the, the numbers that you use, the value that's ascribed to the savings is minimal or insignificant compared to the rest of the building. Likewise, if you look at amortizing those dollars over a 20 or 30-year period of time, you don't recapture those dollars that are invested on interest on a 30-year mortgage if you were to live in that, that property for that period of time. We recommend and would rather encourage, which we've done in the past, the private sector to delve into that aspect of the market. If somebody wants a more efficient house, like Mandalay builds, then they can certainly seek that out in the market. I've had other developers tell me that they've made that type of housing available as part of their marketing strategy and they found that nobody wants to pay the extra money. We would prefer that people rely on technologies that have an immediate effect in the cost savings on a property, namely solar technologies. We've encouraged that and many of the houses in Prescott Valley take advantage of solar technologies. And also, you'll be seeing shortly, one subdivision that also installs very large battery facilities, which also increases the return on that investment, albeit a larger investment, but the return on that investment is between five and eight years. So we would prefer that the market or the private sector establish the market as opposed to the town mandate those improvements. A couple of other remarks and then I'll conclude. I know that the Building Board of Appeals looked at and is considering tamper-resistant receptacles within buildings. Once again, Yavapai County, and I also understand city of Prescott and Chino Valley are not going that direction, so because of our efforts towards consistency, we would encourage that we eliminate that. I did have an opportunity to talk with our legal counsel to determine if there were some sort of latent liability associated with not causing that improvement to take place on a property. They shared with me they have no concern, especially because other jurisdictions have done so. After your efforts to make a recommendation to the council regarding the adoption of the building codes, whatever additions and renditions that you come up with, this will go to the town council in May. That's important because if we make a meeting in May that gives ample opportunity for us to implement the code starting July 1st, but we intend to establish a six-month grace period to be able to cause builders to bring their code, excuse me, their plans up to code, you might expect that we administer a large number of plan in the can, so to speak, which are master plans. Granville alone has 29 master plans that they utilize and we don't think it's reasonable for us to implement July 1st and cause them to necessarily submit new plans to our updated building code, much less the lack of our ability to review those plans and approve them prior to implementation of the code. With that, I'd respond to any questions that you may have.
Deafening silence, thank you very much.
I'll state that I'm, I work in the field, I'm an electrician and we've done about four or five houses now and two of those are custom homes and they are doing the extra to, to make it more efficient. They're doing the spray and foam for insulation and people that, that are building homes that for themselves, that plan on staying there until they die, they're, they're doing the effort. It's, when you, when you just are building homes, you don't, you've got to try and hit the numbers, otherwise you, you can't make any money off of it. It's, it's really bad out there right now and you, you do whatever you can to get it, you know, in there. If we, we start inundating all these people with so much extra stuff, then we're not going to have any more growth here. People are either going to just start jumping on all the, the houses that are for sale that have already been, you know, not new homes and then we slow down. And that, that kills me and then I gotta move because there's no work here. So I, I think we probably, I don't know Woody, if we want to try and start looking at, you know, taking some time to look at more of the energy codes to see what we can start inundating, you know, three, four years down the line, you know? I, I really think it's silly to do the, the blow testing to, you know, that, that's just a whole bunch of extra money that...
No, it's not silly. I take issue with you on that. I've done that in building and it finds holes that otherwise we didn't know were there. So I don't think it's wasted.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I think that, that the contractors should, you know, they could offer these, these items to the people if they want to, you know, look at this for themselves. I mean, the people that know about it, they go out and they look for it. The people that don't know about it, they just want to buy a house. They just, they're trying to get, get in for their family.
And I do have to add one more comment is, is 95% of the builders that we have in Prescott Valley are already building to those standards. I mean, they're, they're opting not to put the R-13 in the wall, they're, they're putting the R-19. In talking with the builder at Stone Ridge, he was doing the energy, the E3 program and all that stuff. He's going away from the E3 program because he had a, a house tested to the E3 program and then a house that he's building now that's not tested to the E3 program. It's within, within one point rating of each other, just based on what he chooses to do and, and provide to his clients. So that's why we feel that the private sector is going to push this themselves, so why, why have the government be telling people what to do?
I hear you and, and of course, you're exposed to this all the time and I respect that. I think you have more knowledge about that. My position continues that by and large, by and large, builders are going to build what the code tells them they need to build. And a few are going to go beyond that, but a majority are not going to go beyond that.
And then one of the other scenarios that just came up like two weeks ago, we, the new apartments over there, they'll, they're built to the highest energy standard, I mean well above and beyond. I'm getting calls from the tenants, why are these fans running in my bathrooms 20 minutes every hour? They just automatically come on. And I have to tell them that's because we built these so tight and then they don't understand, well, I have my heater on, aren't I just sucking all my heat out? And so you have to explain to them that whole scenario, so as long as the public doesn't understand, why is this thing, and they just see it spinning and all that stuff and they go shut their heater off or next thing you know, they're turning their fan off and now we've created a sick house. So it's, it's kind of a learning curve on that part, but I think the industry is policing itself on this, but I mean, we're all for energy. I'll take your guys' recommendations to look at the future and start working on it and see where we go.
I'd like to comment, I, I built a very energy-efficient home up north and wound up losing money on it, I think, because the house was sold compared to comps in the area, which weren't really comps at all compared to what we had done to the house. I, I agree that government probably shouldn't be nosing in all the time on that kind of thing, but I, I guess I have to look at the future, even though, you know, at 76, I don't have to worry about too many years down the road of, of saving energy, but overall, I think we as a, as a country have to continue looking at ways to improve energy, whether it costs us a little bit more or not. I think it's important that we do it for the country, not just for our, our personal gain. that we might get over a five or six-year length of time that we live in a home. So I get kind of torn between those two perimeters, and I guess I agree more with Cal than I do with the recommendations, but that's my personal opinion.
What does, does anyone know how much it actually does make a house more expensive?
Yeah, there's a study.
That the builders are going to charge homeowners. That's what, I mean, when they offer, you know, everyone's saying, okay, they offer this as a separate package. Well, no one's ever going to buy that. Why would you spend more money on a home that you're only going to live in three years? I understand that, but my question is, is how much is it really going to make the builders? How much is it going to, how much are they going to have to go and spend? Because I will agree with Cal, is if you don't raise it, there's, you say, I mean, I know the builders that are exceeding it now, but then there's going to be, there's other ones that are going to slip in, and they're just going to build whatever. And then now you've got this difference, so.
So the one report that I have that was put out by Faithful Plus Gould, to go to the 2012 Energy Code for a slab, unheated basement, or a crawl space house based on a 2,400 square foot house, it would add almost $2,500 to the cost of that house.
Which is nothing. Which is nothing. I mean, honestly, that's nothing.
Right.
Because you put that in your mortgage, it's, I mean, what's 250,000 versus 255,000? I'm just saying.
A thousand dollars of cost increase takes 150,000 American families out of the market for that house, in only a thousand dollars of cost increase.
I have a number from the Department of Energy on a Climate Zone 4, between 2006 and 2012 codes, 23.6% energy saved, an incremental cost of $2,005, a life cycle cost savings of $8,226.
Yeah, I think we're looking at a, as mentioned before, we're looking at a five or six-year span of time that someone might live in a house versus the long-term gain of 100 years or whatever that expectancy of that house is.
Yeah, houses now are, what, down to 50 years?
Down to what?
The life expectancy of a house now is down to 50 years.
Wow.
Yeah. It used to be 100 years.
I guess I'm glad I'm not going to live in my house that long.
Yeah. It used to be life expectancy was 100 years, now it's down to 50-year life cycle for a house.
That is insane.
I mean, but once again, I feel that our contractors that are in our area are doing a good job, they're exceeding what we've asked them to do. It's a self-solving problem. I mean, they're exceeding what we've already done, so why burden them with that additional load? That's my end.
Another option is to maybe even get them, try and get them involved and say, "Look, we should try and do some of these." You know, what is more reasonable for you to try and do, like you said, the R-13 in the walls? I mean, if everybody's doing it, why not just make those five other guys just do it too? You know? But it really should, I mean, we really should, there, nobody's here, I don't know how well we advertise this, but they should be involved too to know, "Yeah, okay, we should do this or we shouldn't do that." I mean, throwing it at them when they don't even know is one thing, but when you start to gradually show them, I think it's a different story. And sitting and having a couple meetings on which is reasonable, which is kind of out there to make it more efficient, I think, I mean, we do these and then we just like boom, 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 and we don't.
I think our goal from the town would be to recommend that we leave the 2006 with the understanding that when we go to the next code cycle, that we will look at an honest evaluation of the energy code and get the contractors really involved in it and what they think. Going back to the industry, you can't go to the store right now and buy a water heater that isn't energy-efficient. You, I mean, what, they tried to outlaw incandescent light bulbs, everybody had to do all that. I mean, so, I mean, the industry in your microwaves, your water heaters, all your major appliances are being established, so you can't go buy, I mean, I remember when we went from six-gallon flush toilets, now we're down to 1.6. I mean, people were smuggling them in from Canada. I mean, with the industry driving these energy costs in their products, I mean, you're getting these air conditioners that are at at least a 10-seer or 12-seer rating. I mean, you can't buy the old styles, it sounds like a B-52 taken off.
I think something we're missing a point on here is, the code we're discussing right here is a minimum standard. This is the minimum that they have to do to pass code. This isn't a, okay, you can't exceed it. This is a minimum. We establish a minimum for the town of Prescott Valley inspectors to go out and look at. If they want to, by choice, exceed that code, there's nobody going to stop them. If they can sell their product, because remember, we're talking about here an industry that if it doesn't make money, then none of us do, because if you kill construction, which we know over a period of eight years ago of time, the area dies. It just flat falls on its face. But we're not establishing here something, well, you can't put R-49 in. We're saying you don't have to if you choose not to. Why is there, we've discussed today the fact that most houses don't have R-13, or you can't buy one. You know why? Because the realtors sold R-16 so hard that they won't even take a client to look at a house that doesn't have R-19 in the wall. They just won't do it. So the market will drive the upper quality of what we're talking about. We're talking about voting on a minimum standard, a minimum standard. And I understand all of the points that have been made. Prior to 2006, the energy code wasn't even any business of the building department. In 2006, the federal government came down and said, "You guys took money, just like these other guys did. You now have to implant a energy code, or you're in trouble." So we did it. I sat right on the board and we did it, because we were told flat out we had to. It wasn't an option. Now, I would like to know, how many more inspections are involved in the average house today only because of the energy code?
At least two.
And I'm guessing it's closer to four, if you really look at it. So that's four times. Now, it used to be, we had a footing inspection, we had an under-slab inspection, we had a frame inspection, which was also the top out, and we had a final. And we went on about our business. So now we've added to the five, we've added four more. So now we've got about nine inspections per house, which now we have to cover. Did the government send us any money to do that with?
No.
I'm supposing not. So I'm supposing that at some point in time, we raised the permit fee to the builders and said, "Okay, guys, here's another $500 that you've got to cover," or whatever the number is. So we need to, as a board, say, "Well, wait a minute. We can build a Cadillac, but people can only afford a Ford." And the code says a minimum. It does not say, "Okay, let's force the builders to do this, let's force the builders to do that." At this point, some people can't even afford the minimum. And if we increase the cost of the minimum, and then everybody, the newspapers and everybody's yelling at us, "Well, why can't you build an affordable house?" There are no more affordable houses, guys. I mean, there's people that can afford houses, but to say that a $15-an-hour guy can buy a house, you're just blowing smoke. So what I'm saying is, we need to look at this code as a minimum, not as an end-all to what we figure is our ideal of what a new house should be. Would I like R-49? I don't know. Would I like an airtight home? No, I wouldn't. I've been in them. They make people sick. You've got to have the fan on 20 minutes every hour to make the house livable. You say you get rid of the mold and the mildew? No. You seal the place up, you get more mold and mildew. Because somebody decided, "Well, I want this," and they happen to be on the board, so they put it in, and the board says, "Okay." I say, we have a minimum standard. Now, again, has Legal finished their survey of this?
Yes, Legal has actually reviewed the whole document that we've all looked at and everything, and we've had a meeting with them, all the revisions. Mainly, it was formatting issues, they did not change any requirements that we've talked about. It was mainly just formatting and then some questions like, "Do we really want this section?" And we said, "Yes, we needed that section." So they have finished their review. We have, April, yesterday, I got the final document that was reviewed by Ivan, the head attorney. So we are good on attorney review.
I'll tell you why I brought that up. Just recently, the state of Arizona, the legislature passed a bill that said that DPS could raise a license fee to whatever they wanted to, to support themselves. After the bill was passed, it had an open spot in it. Do what you want, and they did. And there's not one person here that hasn't complained about what they did. You know? And so I guess it really boils down to, we need to know what really and truly we're voting on, which apparently we can now, because Legal is done with their rigmarole. But I think we need to remember, this is a minimum code, we're not stopping anybody from going out and building a Cadillac. I guess that's really my point.
Thank you, Richard.
The other issue that we were needing to talk about is the tamper-resistant. So since we've met last time, the vote was to put them back in the code and not remove them. So we've made that change. Since then, other jurisdictions have had their meetings, and what the town, what the city staff would recommend to us to help be more consistent and everything, is we want to remove the requirement for tamper-resistant receptacles in single-family dwellings, but leave and add the additionals that came out of in the NEC. So we would remove from single-family dwellings, but we would still have triplexes and above. We would add for guest rooms, guest suites, and hotels and motels, childcare facilities, preschools, elementary schools, business offices, waiting rooms, and assembly occupancies. So we would like a recommendation, or we're recommending to the board to go ahead and make that change to say, tamper-resistant receptacles required in these areas, but exempt from single-family residents.
I agree with that.
I would agree with that, too. That bugs the heck out of me. The code changes, and a lot of the electrical things have cost a lot of money for ridiculous reasons. How many kids get killed by that kind of thing happening?
So that puts us inconsistent with the other jurisdictions, because the county completely removed them, but they don't build that many hotels in the county. The City of Prescott removed them from single-family dwelling, and Chino also. So that's our recommendation, and if that's what you guys would agree to, then I'll go ahead and exempt them from single-family dwellings, but then leave the commercials where they need to be.
Do you want to take a vote?
Are you in a motion?
We can, can we?
I don't know.
No, it's not. It's not a...
All right. I'll actually make the change, and then when we come back to vote on it on the April 24th, that will be something that I'll address there. So I'll go ahead and make the change and present that to you at your voting session on April 24th.
Well, they'll actually have it in the packets to review prior to, because ideally, we aren't making changes the night of the vote.
Yeah.
And then the only other thing, I did email out, well, Legal's first review, but then Ivan had made a few tweaks. The biggest thing that I noticed offhand, which we touched on briefly last time, had to do with the qualifications for the board members, and they reworded it a little bit, but they removed the duly license by the state of Arizona from each of them. And I think that kind of was the consensus of everyone, that we didn't need that strict of qualifications.
Thank you. That was one of their biggest revisions that we made to the document that you guys have already reviewed. Am I still qualified?
Again, that's the minimum standard.
Just a quick clarification. I see three people over here that seem to be leaning towards a more stringent energy code, at least listening to their comments. I've heard one over here that is opposed. I've seen maybe three others that I need to hear from you, because otherwise, we're going to amend the code consistent with the direction the board's going, as opposed to showing up and then having to amend the code. As Christie pointed out, again, I'd really like to get this to the town council in May so we can stay on track in terms of timeframe. We've been at this, in my view, a long time.
I would oppose inundating it right now, but with the hopes of we like to go through it.
Let's do better than the hopes. If your recommendation, you're concerned about it, charge the building official with putting together a Hallmark Committee of the trades, and give him a timeframe by which he comes back with a recommendation. I think that's a reasonable approach. There's some accountability as opposed to, we should look at it during our next code cycle, which may be six years out.
Yeah, that's too long.
Let's get people who are professionals to come forward and say, "These are reasonable things, these are things we already do," and adopt something kind of as a stepped process towards ultimately adoption of a 2012 or later code revisions. I think that would address the concerns I heard, but I would like to hear from the other two members who haven't expressed the direction you'd like to go.
Question.
We can't vote. We can't vote tonight.
You can't vote, but you can tell us what you think.
Yeah, I agree with what you just described, I think that's a good approach.
Me too.
Is that it?
I might add, Christie, I certainly appreciate all the work you do in getting all of the information out and all the copying. Speaking for myself, I don't mind at all just supplementing a few pages, if it will help you avoid going through the extra work of re-copying all of that material, so.
Well, I appreciate that, and thank you. And I was on the fence of having you switch out, but you know, those staples, there were just a lot of pages to switch out after the last time, so I thought it was just cleaner to do it. And there will be hopefully just one last that I'll print out. Though I may do, because obviously we'll need to make changes, Legal will need to do it about the tamper-resistant. So I can just contact you when they're ready, and we can even maybe just drop them off, because ideally, I would have sent them out tomorrow, so you have plenty of time to prepare. But they won't be ready tomorrow, so I can just call you, we can drop them off, you want to pick them up, we'll get them to you as soon as we can.
And the other point of business is, the next meeting is a public hearing, so you'll be running it as a public hearing, you need to open it up to a floor, take comments relative to the changes to code. It's going to be noticed, posted, and advertised, so there may be some people in the audience who would like to talk a little bit about their desires and wishes, and that's most prudent that you do so. So we'll make sure that that takes place, and that you have your material in ample time in advance of your meeting. And again, I appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we're adjourned.